I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano is absent. Gordon is absent. Conno is absent. Reich.
Here.
Bender is absent. Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are nine members present.
Now, we have four in present. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order, and Councilmember Glidden has moved that. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. And we've been joined by Councilmember Gordon. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting in adjourned session of September 11th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move acceptance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We've been joined by Councilmember Bender. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports to the city officers to proper committees and departments.
Second.
Any discussion? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. The reports to the standing committees are next, and the first is Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item on the agenda. It's a request for proposals for minimum wage increase evaluations, and I will move this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report authorizing an RFP for comprehensive analysis of a citywide minimum wage increase, and separately, the impacts of a minimum wage increase in Hennepin and Ramsey County. Any discussion on that item? We've been joined by Councilmember Conno. Any discussion on that item? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, on this item, I just asked a simple question with regards to whether we as a city have authority to raise the minimum wage. And at this point, I don't know what the answer is, and I'd like to get an answer before I make this decision, just because, you know, we're spending about $150,000 on RFP, and so I'm going to be voting no on this today.
Any further discussion on the Committee of the Whole item? Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to note that this is a topic that has been brought forward by a lot of folks in Minneapolis, working people and their advocates, who see raising wages as an important piece of allowing people to make ends meet in the economy as it has changed over time. And many people are working many low-wage jobs and still aren't able to pay their rent and meet their basic needs. And this is a complicated topic. We've had many months of meetings, and so many council members have been engaged, as well as staff from CPED, our City Attorney's Office, our Public Health Department, and many more, civil rights. So this was a really collaborative effort among policymakers and staff to bring us to a point where we can ask a lot of the important questions that policymakers have before we make this decision about raising wages locally. And so I just am really excited that we're at this point. This is one small step toward moving this conversation forward, and I think we arrived at a really great approach to studying this important topic.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'm not going to be supporting this today as well. I have concerns, as Councilmember Yang does, about our actual authority. I think if we think back, last year, the legislature actually had in front of them the question or inquiry from some members of the legislature, whether cities had the authority. I don't know if a bill was actually introduced to prohibit cities from having this authority. But the other challenge that I find in having a survey or a study is that we're going to hear, depending on who is chosen to do this study, who responds to the study, to the request or proposals for the study, whether the outcome of the study is even valid or informative. So I just don't, again, it is an expenditure that I don't think, in the end, is going to add much to the discussion. It's going to be a political decision about what people want to do, and the repercussions of it are unknown at this point. So I won't be supporting it either. Any further discussion on the Committee of the Whole item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
There are 10 ayes and three noes.
That item passes. Next, we have Community Development and Regulatory Services, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 11 items forward this morning. The notable items include item number one, which is the land sale of 95 parcels in the Humboldt Greenway to gimmick and their partners to build a fair number of market-rate homes on the north side. Item two is a land sale. Item number three is a fairly notable item. This has to do with approving the direction to Election and Voter Services to have the city work with landlords in order to make sure that information about registering to vote is available to all renters. And item number eight is of note. That's also our emergency shelter grant capital funding recommendations. With that, I'll move all items, 1 through 11, for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services report. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, I just really, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Frye. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize. My computer was struggling a bit this morning. I just wanted to comment very briefly on item number three. I'm very proud that this is presently moving forward. I think it could have a dramatic impact on the number of voters ultimately registered. Registration is, of course, the number-one impediment to allowing people, and specifically those who are moved frequently, to vote. So whether it's youth, students, communities of color, seniors, veterans, this is a wonderful way to get them engaged in participating civically, and I think it could have a substantial impact. So I'm really proud. I want to thank staff, the clerks in the elections office, for helping us along, as well as the Secretary of State, Steve Simon's office, for working with us. I think it's a great step forward.
Any further discussion on the Community Development Regulatory Services report? Seeing none, I really just want to comment on items one and two. Number two is the community land trust purchasing a home, one of the homes that's been in foreclosure, long neglected, long unoccupied in Ward Four, and we're making progress on trying to deal with these homes. And then the second item, so great work by staff, second item is the land sale for the Humboldt Greenway. And I just want to say how happy I am that this proposal is in front of us with a very reputable developer, and neighbors are excited about seeing the construction going forward. And it's a wonderful location, and I'm sure we will see great success with these homes being developed, and that neighborhood is very, very excited about moving forward and finishing this project. It's been a great, the initial project has been a great boost for the Shingo Creek and Lynn Bohannon neighborhoods, and this will just continue that success. So great to see this happen. Thank you to the staff for great work on it. On the Community Development Regulatory Services report, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing two items forward for approval. The first is authorizing an amendment to our contract with Next Gen Healthcare Information Systems to allow electronic reporting of school-based clinic program immunization data to the Department of Health. There's no change to the contract dates or amounts. The second item is forwarding our comments on Excel Energy's 2016-2030 Resource Plan, and I have a substitute motion that I mentioned in Committee of the Whole, and I did email out to everybody that I would like to move before you. It makes some rather minor changes that I worked out with sustainability staff based on the discussion we had at the committee. It's just asking the PUC, consider increasing the energy savings goals instead of the Excel wants to set a goal and then diminish that goal over time, and we're saying that they shouldn't. We also asked that they adopt a plan that was a little bit stronger on carbon intensity levels, and we're asking that they plan for more significant growth in distributed solar. I'm happy to answer any questions on those, but if there aren't any, I'd like to move the substitute and item number one.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the number one in the Health, Community Engagement report and the substitute, which is in front of you on letterhead for item two. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item on the agenda for today. It was authorizing our Federal Representation Services contract with Fabry BD Consulting, and I will move this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have eight items. Two of the items are acceptance of grants, two are contract amendments, two are acceptance of funds, and one is a grant application, and the last one is passage of an ordinance regarding emergency services for technical rescue responses. And with that, I will move all items.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwarded 16 items today for consideration. Item one, which had considerable discussion in the committee, which is the Southwest Light Rail Transit Project, the Minnesota approval of that project, and it's a passage resolution approving the physical design components of the preliminary design plans for that project, and a passage resolution conveying the city's concerns to the railroad companies and Metropolitan Council regarding freight rail safety in the Southwest Light Rail Corridor in the City of Minneapolis, and that latter component had a full resolution associated with it. Item two is the Downtown Business Improvement Special Service District assessments and approving those assessments in the area of work to be completed, and also the special service districts for the other areas of the city, similar action for assessments and work to be done in those areas. Item four is the Non-Governmental Tax Exempt Parcel Streetlight Operation Assessments. It's adopting the designation of those citywide assessments and setting the public hearing for October 27th. Likewise, the Tax Exempt Parcel for Street Maintenance Assessments, and that hearing will be for October 27th. That's item five. Item six is to accommodate the zombie pub crawl block event on October 17, 2015. Item seven is the Washington Avenue Street Reconstruction Project designation of cost estimates and set a public hearing for that project, and that public hearing is October 27, 2015. Item eight is the Downtown East Pedestrian Realm Improvement Agreement, and that's authorizing agreement to reimburse Ryan Companies for $50,000 for construction of city infrastructure according to the terms identified for that block and downtown east plan development. Following items referred to the Ways and Means Committee, item nine is the 50th Street France Avenue Parking Facility Assessments. Assess those assessments for that area. Item 10 is the Clean Water Fund Inflow Infiltration Grant Agreement, and that's execute a grant agreement with Metropolitan Council for those activities. Item 11 is the Mississippi Watership Management Organization Grant Agreement, and that's to accept a grant from them to increase a current grant by $100,000 for Stormwater 24th Street East, and Snelling Avenue paving project, and a passage resolution approving that appropriation. Item 12 is the Minnesota Parking System Contract. That's a contract with ABM Services for $21,400,000 for a three-year term beginning October 1st, and two possible one-year renewals for the operation of our Minnesota Parking System. And the final, or no, not the final item, item 13 is the bid for Snelling Avenue 24th Street Reconstruction Project. Set the amount in the area for that project to proceed. Item 14 is a bid for the Minneapolis Intelligent Traffic Single Enhancements, and that's accepting a single bid of Eaton Company, and we did concur that the costs are consistent even though there was a single bid. Item 15 is accepting a little bit of black construction for an estimated amount of $146,000 to deliver all labor materials for Pump Station 5 roof slab replacement and authorizing a contract for that project. And the final item is accepting a little bit of Minger Construction for an estimated expenditure of $5,835,000 to furnish and deliver all labor materials with a Nicklet Mall Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project and authorizing a contract for that project. Madam President, I move all items as stated for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report, the most items of any report this week or this cycle. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Since I'm not on the committee, I just wanted to comment on four of the items that have a substantial impact on my ward, and I'm really appreciative of all the work that went into it. First off, the Downtown Improvement District, DID, does an extraordinary job. I mean, I get compliments to my office almost on a weekly basis as to how the ambassadors treat residents, businesspeople, and tourists. They're friendly, they're helpful, and they add, I think substantially, to the feel in our downtown community, which has very much become a neighborhood. Secondly, item number six, Zombie Pub Crawl, is a wonderful event, and I'm mentioning this because it's a wonderful event, and in fact, bars and restaurants make, in some cases, their highest revenue generating days of the entire year. But I want to have one caveat. There was, last year, there were some difficulties in terms of the notification to the businesses that were not involved. In other words, not bars and restaurants, given that they close off the entire segment of downtown. And I think we have found a solution. I really appreciate the work that Phil Schlesman and the rest of the department did to ensure that this moves forward in a productive, efficient, and fully notified manner, and I think it will ultimately be a great event. And then items number seven and eight, just briefly, I know a heck of a lot of work went into both the Washington Avenue reconstruction, as well as the Downtown East Public Realm Improvements Agreement, and I just want to thank staff. I think they will both result in wonderful projects in Downtown East.
Any further discussion on any of the items on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask that you'd pull item number one.
Okay, we'll pull off item number one. Any other discussion on any of the rest of the agenda? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll on all items on the Transportation and Public Works Agenda or Report, excuse me, with the exception of item one.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Yep. Those items are adopted on item one. Then, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam President. My office has worked to prepare four pages of talking points for me this morning. I probably don't need a single page of talking points to talk about this issue that's been part of my career for the better part of 15 years. So I probably don't need to look at a talking point to talk about the way that this project has come about. But I'm not going to bore any of you with the history of this, because I know exactly what the outcome of this is going to be. And so often, you speak to educate the public and your colleagues about an issue, and here, no one really needs any further education. You often speak about an issue in order to persuade your colleagues to see things a different way, and clearly, there isn't going to be any change in votes or persuasion despite all of the new information that's come out with regard to the SDIS to date. But I am going to make a couple of points that I don't know have been fully made regarding this project. I want to start with the words of Judge Jack Toonheim, who chastised the Met Council, and they know it, about the fact that they have picked this alternative prior to the time that any kind of full environmental review has been complete. Through much of this process, the Met Council has had a clear favorite route for Southwest LRT. While the agency involved can state a substantive preference, the unique nature of municipal consent in Minnesota for light rail projects, and the significant drumbeat of support by the Met Council assembled for a single route certainly comes close to having the practical effect of limiting the available options, and that the remaining federal environmental review is meaningless. By reaching an agreement with St. Louis Park that results in freight traffic remaining in this corridor, the Met Council has come dangerously close to impermissibly prejudicing the ongoing environmental review process. That is more than a slap on the hand from the judge. The bottom line is, the environmental review process still has not given us all of the information that we need to feel comfortable moving forward. And I want to talk specifically about the safety implication of locating freight rail trains carrying large amounts of ethanol through a corridor that is 32 feet from people's homes and 2 feet from the foundation of the grain elevator condominium buildings. This is a new and serious impact. Many of my colleagues have been involved in freight train safety issues, including Councilmember Reich, and thank goodness, he's working to bring forward some language. But the truth of the matter is, the rail lines have tremendous control over what happens in our city. What they don't have to control is the idea of building a tunnel and putting people in light rail trains underground while moving ethanol trains above, and hoping that whatever piling system the Met Council is able to come up with, to have those two things located one over the other in a pinch point of 56 feet, and pray that there won't be an accident, I think is some sort of wishful thinking. I also want to talk a little bit about this pile-driving issue. Many of you have heard about what's happening at the Trig site currently in my ward, where they've had to stop the construction of a new building that's about 100 feet from an existing building because of the impacts of the vibratory drilling that's going on in order to put in those foundations. We have this exact same problem in this corridor, where the soils are questionable, and hydraulic, high-frequency vibratory hammer method clearly is going to provide risks to adjacent buildings, these grain elevators, that we just, you know, voted that grain elevators are historic in our city, and they've been there for a long period of time. They're going to be talking about using a method that is 2 feet from their foundation. I don't think you need to be an engineer to figure that hydraulic, high-frequency vibratory hammering could potentially be a problem for the foundation of a condominium building over 10 stories tall immediately next to their homes. And this hydraulic press method that's been discussed is good when the soil is good, but it's not when the soil is not good. So I think one of the biggest problems we have today is, we're going to go ahead, you guys are going to go ahead and move this forward, and in the end, they're not going to be able to build a tunnel, because we know that there are all sorts of issues with the soils and these methods. And then they're going to be right back at us, God knows how many dollars later in this process, stating that they're going to have to basically co-locate at grade, but they can't do that because of the pinch point without taking out 87 town homes, which have a total current tax base of over $36 million and affect the lives of more than 100 families. And that's just on the townhome side. Any kind of problem with any kind of issue on the other side would result in the loss of the grain elevator condominium buildings, and any kind of construction in this corridor could put at risk that building. And, you know, the Met Council's track record on working on these projects to make things palatable for the neighbors, in my ward, is pitiful. There was a sewer project, a sanitary sewer project, that happened in my ward last year down 28th Street, and basically, when damage was done to properties, the Met Council's response was file a lawsuit against the contractor. So these neighbors are left with a situation where a unit of government is saying, we're not really going to be responsible, because we hire a contractor to do this work, and 11 neighbors actually ended up suing the Met Council, and they did settle with a few of them, and the rest of them actually had damage to their homes as the result of a sewer project that they never were able to remedy with the Met Council. This whole concept of an unelected board doing massive work like this outside people's homes that damaged their homes, I think, is a problem, and it's going to be a bigger problem on this project moving forward. So we know, basically, that the Met Council staff, all of them sitting out here today, super excited about the fact that we're going to move forward, are actually kind of thinking, I think she's kind of right about some of these issues. But we're just going to press forward, because this project is too big to fail, because all of the pressure coming down from every institution, from the Downtown Council to the Star Tribune Editorial Board to the Governor's Mansion, has said, we're going to make this work. We're going to fit this square peg into a round hole, and we don't care what the outcome is going to be. So I have some level of sympathy for my constituents. I would hope there are others who have sympathy for the fact that these are residents of the City of Minneapolis, who have tremendous concerns about what potentially could happen from an environmental point of view, but also from a construction point of view, to the single biggest asset that they own, which are their homes. And so I realize my speaking on this isn't going to change one person's point of view, but I feel the need to speak out. I don't know that I'll still be elected and on this council when they come back to us to talk about taking townhomes and taking people's homes out, or dealing with damage, or potentially an ethanol spill in this corridor. But some of you might be here, and you'll remember my words.
Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I've struggled with this vote, and, you know, I think Councilmember Goodman is right in a lot of what she said, and, you know, I do have a lot of sympathy for a lot of her constituents and a lot of the folks that came to testify at this public hearing, but the last public hearing, too. Those words that folks said with regards to their neighborhoods and the impact on their lives, I mean, are very real. And, you know, I pray that nothing bad ever happens, but I do see the concerns, and I think the folks that are talking about their concerns and about just the potential harm that can be done to them in the blast zone and those sorts of things, it's very real. And, you know, it's tough to take a vote like this, but, you know, I guess, in some ways, we just have to balance, you know, what's good for some folks over other folks. And, you know, as Councilmember Goodman has said in the past, you know, sometimes, you know, in these situations, you have to just pick winners and losers. And I hope that I don't regret the vote that I'm taking, but certainly, I've heard all the concerns, and I take them very seriously, and I hope we don't come back for a third round of municipal consent. That would just be insane. So just want to put that out there.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a bit unusual, but there's been several questions that have come in from my constituents and others, and I wondered if staff could help address those. This is such a major topic. So the main question I had been getting recently was about ridership projections and a discrepancy between, particularly at the 21st Street Station, which we have worked hard to maintain in the project as the City of Minneapolis. But we had gotten a question from a constituent about discrepancy in those numbers, and I wondered if staff could answer that question.
Councilmember Bender, we would have to have a motion to suspend our rules. Sir, I'm sorry, are you City of Minneapolis staff? No. So we would need a motion to suspend our rules to allow staff from the Metropolitan Council to speak. Is there a motion to do so? Okay, moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. All right, sir. If you'd like to come up and give your name, please, and Councilmember Bender, then direct your questions to the staff.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Bender, Craig LaMoss, project director for Southwest LRT. It's a great question. Ridership numbers end up changing over time, and we end up using the data for multiple different purposes. Specifically, to the 21st Street Station. So approximately, there's approximately 2,000 daily usage at that station, of which So approximately, there's approximately 2,000 daily usage at that station, of which about 1,000 is going and 1,000 is coming. So from a daily boarding standpoint, it's about 1,000 people getting on the train. But then from a project ridership standpoint, which is what FTA evaluates these projects